I think we'll get started and open the Thursday, May 7th, meeting of the Winchester Select Board. Lisa, I didn't know if there was, I see that Beth is there. Did we want, and I don't know if Jay is on as well, if we want to start off there with some of the traffic stuff and other things that we have to deal with?
Yep, so I actually asked Beth to help us with discussions on two things this morning. So, one is the MBTA Design Review Letter. That's in draft form, and Beth and I have another meeting with the MBTA later on this afternoon. And then the Waterfield Crossing issue as well, so I don't know which one you want to start with.
I guess we can start with the crossing first.
Okay, so the board, I think the last piece of information I gave to the board was a estimate from Tool Design. And then based on discussions on Monday, we wanted to look specifically at whether they could sort of pull out the crash data portion. And Eric came back and said that that portion was about $720, so, you know, less than a 10% change in the overall scope. And so I don't know if you have any questions for Beth about the scope? And maybe some recommendations on, you know, what we need moving forward?
I just wanted to clarify, her new fee proposal is $8,460, and she trimmed back the report and took out a meeting. So that's the current proposal, that's a little bit less than what the previous version was.
So, this is Susan, Beth and everybody, I've heard from David Anderson, who's a, he's on the T-Tech, I think, and he's also a dedicated bike commuter, and had, he had some thoughts that I want, I invited him to come attend and give public comment. I don't know if he can make it. But I wanted to have the board consider something that he suggested, which was not so much a full-fledged pedestrian crosswalk as a bike route crossing. The thing that really interested me in that is that it would very clearly be labeled and have pavement markings that would show a bicycle that would make motorists coming through that sort of curved mailbox, you know, drive-by mailbox exit, make them aware that bicycles would be entering to their right. And he's, it would be very clear also to bicyclists that they were coming off of a protected off-street bike route and coming into a town and crossing streets with vehicles and, you know, congested streets. So I wanted to propose that we have Tool consider doing that as well and make us a recommendation about how to do that. It might be less costly, and I, you know, I don't, I don't want to prejudge their recommendation, but I think that we need, what we're trying to do here mainly is to allow the bike route to go across the street. And that, that's important too, you know, just to be sure that the bike, it's very clear that it's a bike route.
Yes, I guess my, my concern with that is that it is a shared path, so it's not just for bicyclists. And so there's, to be honest, more probably folks in, you know, walking or with strollers, and it is fully handicap accessible, so there are people, you know, in wheelchairs or, you know, other disabilities who are using the path. And I think, I think, I don't think we can just put a crossing that's just for bikes, because other people will use it, whether we, you know, whether we say not to use it or not. So I think that would be difficult just to say that there's a biking, a crossing just for bikes at that location. I do think we'd have to have, you know, the handicap ramps and all that regardless. So I'm not sure, from a, from a scope position, if that would make a huge difference. Does everybody want a little bit of background on where we got to where we are with the bikeway? Or it's not, not much matter for the conversation?
So, Beth, I mean, yeah, the background is fine, but let me, I have a couple of comments. So I mean, I agree with you that I think it's going to be used by a lot more than just bicyclists, especially given that it's behind McCall, a lot of pedestrians will be using it. I think we can look at the example of the Minuteman Bikeway, which is also used by pedestrians and strollers. And when they come on a, and obviously they have a lot of overhead or overpass crossings, but they do have street crossings, and they have raised crosswalk, where the crosswalk is at the same height as the curb, so it wouldn't require any curb cuts. And they also have stop signs for the bikeway itself. So that tells people that, hey, just because it's at the same grade, it doesn't, as a cyclist, it doesn't mean that you're still in a protected area, right? And I think that makes more sense than the, I mean, we see cars violating all sorts of paintings all the time, whether we put "don't block the intersection" or "no turn" or whatever. It seems like, you know, people and cars don't pay attention to those things. So I have a little bit of a concern with putting the onus on the cars to protect the bicyclists, because we see that doesn't happen. So I'd rather see a raised crosswalk, because you can't just drive through it like paint, and a stop sign or a yield sign facing the bikeway, because I think cyclists are a lot more aware of the dangers to themselves since, since they are most vulnerable in a crash with cars.
Those are fair points, and the thing that I was most interested in when I saw what David had proposed was the paintings on the street showing that there was a bike path around and alerting people to that. I'm all for making it safer for both the bicyclists and everybody else using that area. So now I understand the rationale for the raised crosswalk a little better too, so, fine by me.
So do you want me to ask Tool to evaluate a raised crosswalk at that location? It will be a lot more expensive in terms of construction. I don't disagree with you that it's a lot, it's a safer option. My only concern, and this has kind of been my concern all along, is that there has to be enough sight distance for vehicles turning right from Mystic Valley Parkway onto Waterfield Road to be able to see and recognize that crosswalk and stop in time. So that's, that's kind of been my concern all along, and that's partly why I didn't want to just go ahead and put a crosswalk there, because it, people, and it'll slow down once we do the traffic calming, but people take that corner very fast, and that crosswalk will come up very quickly. And I don't want to put people in a position where we're creating a dangerous crossing for pedestrians and bicyclists. So a raised crosswalk would certainly help that. We just need to make sure that the cars have enough time, once they come around that corner, to react to that, so that we don't get somebody kind of launching off a raised crosswalk. And that's something that we could, we could ask Tool to review that.
But part of the construction that we're doing is actually making it so that the turn is further away, right?
Yeah, so we're, the, the whole intersection is being, it's very wide now, right? So it's being, it's being shrunk down, much more of a, it'll be much more of a 90-degree bend. And we are, like you said, pulling that, that intersection out into Mystic Valley Parkway a little bit, so there will be more room. But again, I think we just need to make sure, and there is, since there already is another crosswalk, like at Black Horse Tavern, we just want to make sure that, you know, there's enough room for everybody to stop in all of those locations safely. Does the board want me to ask Tool to look at the raised crosswalk option there?
So I guess my question would be, what, what do we expect? So this, the, so what is the result of the SOW? What would Tool deliver to us for the, you know, around $8,000 or $9,000 that they've quoted?
Yeah, so, so what I asked them to do was, number one, to confirm, based on the post-construction condition at the Mystic Valley Parkway, Wedgemere, or, excuse me, Waterfield intersection, that there's adequate sight lines and adequate, you know, safety to install a crosswalk at that location, so that we're not putting pedestrians in a situation, or bicycles in a situation, where they feel like they're safe because of their crosswalk, but in reality, vehicles don't have enough time to react to that, because they can't see them right when they're coming around the corner. So that's, that's the first, if we can't check that box, then we're not going to go any further. The second piece that I asked them to do was to put together a concept plan, assuming that it is safe, that would lay out what the parking in that area would be. So I think we're probably going to end up losing one space on the southern side of Waterfield Road, and probably two spaces on the, on the post office side of Waterfield Road. Now, we may be able to gain another spot towards the, towards Mystic Valley Parkway with the rejiggering of the intersection. But overall, I've asked them to do a concept plan that would show, you know, where the crosswalk would be, parking spaces that would be lost, and then do a new parking space layout, so everybody's clear what those impacts will be. There's a requirement that you're not supposed to have parking on either, for 20 feet on either side of a, of a crosswalk, so that will push the parking even, you know, minimize the amount of parking out there even further.
So we don't meet that right now on the crosswalk, across from Black Horse Tavern, then?
So on one side, right, there's no parking on one side, because it's right at the intersection. But on the other, on the Black Horse Tavern side, I think you're right, that there is parking closer than 20 feet. Now, it doesn't really impact the sight lines there, because there's no cars coming kind of east on, you know what I mean, like on the, on the other side, you can see, because there's no parking on that side.
Yeah, but I mean, it's the same thing with all our other crosswalks. So the crosswalk in front of Starbucks, the one across Main Street, also has, on the north side, has cars within five feet of the crosswalk, and...
Right, and so, you know, technically by law, we're not supposed to have parking within 20 feet of a, of a crosswalk. So if you look at what we've done in front of Bank of America, where they've kind of X-ed on either side, we did that maybe five or 10 years ago.
Yeah, so unfortunately, unless it's a race crosswalk, it doesn't matter, because by adding extra space, it just creates a parking space for people. So what we see in front of Bank of America is that we see cars parked there all the time.
Right, and so that, that will be addressed as part of the, the work that we're doing at Church and Waterfield. I just want to, I am totally for the raised crosswalk idea. It's just, construction-wise, it will be a more expensive project, and we'll have to also evaluate the drainage impacts in that area. So, you know, I just want to be, everybody to understand that if we go in that direction, which I don't think is a bad idea, but it's not, it's not an easy kind of thing to just go and do. So there'll have to be some additional engineering involved with it, to take it to the next step with design and construction. If we just stick with a regular surface-level crosswalk, then, once we get to the concept plan, we can have the contractor just put the handicap ramps in. So I'm fine with either, I just want everybody to understand the kind of implications if we do go with a raised crosswalk option.
Just to let everyone know, David Anderson has just joined the meeting as well. So David is on T-Tech and has given us some analysis, but can certainly speak to some of these issues as well. David, we've just been kind of discussing the options at the crossing there, I don't know if you have thoughts?
Thank you, you did.
Thank you for the scramble to get me on there.
Can hear you fine now.
Everything's good now, thank you. So I guess just sort of starting, starting cold on some thoughts, was just the notion that I think we're not, you know, Roger and I come at this from somewhat different points of view, but we're very much in agreement that we're not looking for perfection in terms of, you know, a full-blown, you know, sort of intersection here, but some markings. And there, there's already one stop sign on one side, if there's a stop sign on the path leading from the other direction, and there's adequate sight lines and a way to get off the curb, and whether it's a crosswalk, bicycle path marking on the street, it doesn't have to be elaborate. It just has to be enough for people to identify that there is a crossing there. I think the reconfiguration, the realignment that Tool is doing at Mystic Valley Parkway is, is going to improve the situation already, just by reducing the speeds at which people come around the corner from Mystic Valley Parkway. And so that they have a little, drivers have a chance to sort of look at what's ahead of them. But right now, from whichever side you emerge on the, on the path, you know, you just sort of appear in the street, as far as the driver is concerned. So a marking on the street will help with that. And I think ultimately, a raised path, that's at the, the level of the, or a raised crossing at the level of the sidewalk would be perfect. But I don't know that we have to accomplish that right now. So I, I understand that there's, it makes sense to incorporate a more full-blown design into the redesign of the plaza in front of the, what I think of as a plaza in front of the post office. But, you know, that's going to take some time, and that probably has to wait for the conclusion of the train station project. And so that's, you know, several years down the line at this point. So I, you know, I, I really envision this crossing as being not really much more than either grinding down the, the existing curbs, or pushing out in a very small way, just to give better visibility and ramping down to the street level. And, you know, it might just be the stamped asphalt with the thermoplastic paint that we've done elsewhere in town, you know, just sort of the, the red brick pattern with a white outlining it as a, as a crosswalk. I don't think it really has to be more than that.
So maybe part of the recommendation would be kind of a short-term and long-term construction there, where maybe we start off with something very simple and with some painting. And I know Jay Gill said that you, they can do, the DPW can do curb cuts in that area within their existing budget, and maybe there's, we build towards the long-term solution. I don't know, I don't know if that works as part of the, the scope that Tool has. Beth, maybe you can weigh in?
Yeah, so Tool is only evaluating a surface crossing there, not a raised crosswalk. If it's some, if a raised crosswalk is something that the board wants me to have them look at, I can certainly do that.
So in my view, if we're going to do a surface crossing, then we don't need to go spend $8,000 or $9,000 on a study. I think DPW can do the curb cuts and do the paint and rearrange the parking spots without the need for us to go spend a lot of money. I think it would make more sense to do the study if we're going to do a race crosswalk. And I think we have a good opportunity here, given that there is a project, a construction, two construction projects going on there to, to have a significant improvement. I mean, I think a, a surface-level crosswalk is, is not going to be very safe in general. I mean, I see the one in front of Black Horse Tavern, where cars blow past pedestrians trying to cross all the time. So, but if that's, if the consensus of the board is that we want to have a surface crossing, then I don't think we need to spend the money on, on the study, we can just do it. I think we would only spend it if we're going to make an improvement there for a race crosswalk.
I just want to jump in. I just, I'm sorry, I just wanted to, I was a couple of minutes late for the call, but I wanted you guys to know I was on as well. And I, I obviously want to hear from Beth, I didn't know she was about to say something. But I, I agree with Mariano's comments, and I also think there's a lot of kids in that area. It's all, it's kind of narrow anyway, and the more visible anyone is, the safer it will be.
So I was just going to jump in and say that my only concern in all of this is, is not putting a crosswalk in unsafe conditions. So I think that's why we recommended the study, to just ensure that there are adequate sight lines on that area, and that vehicles have enough time to see and recognize and stop for pedestrians in that location after they take that turn from Waterfield Road on, on, excuse me, from Mystic Valley Parkway onto Waterfield Road. So if you're looking to reduce the scope, then potentially we could ask Tool to take out the concept plan, if that's something. But at least we can maybe ask them to do the sight distance evaluation.
I, I just don't want the, the tail to wag the dog here. I mean, we need to, you know, we, we do these evaluations using Tool to have an engineer tell us whether we have options there that make sense and don't. If we're only going to do a, have Tool do a evaluation in a study, if they conclude that we need a raised crosswalk there, I mean, I, I don't know. I mean, it's, I think whatever is the most safe option and the best option, you know, I'm happy with. I just, I don't, I don't know that we can tell Tool that we need them to tell us that that is the option that is best. You know, there's a lot of considerations. So we've always done studies in the past when we've engaged in construction project at, especially at very busy intersections like this. So it's, it's just something that we typically do, and we always do.
Beth, this is Amy, is, I haven't had a chance to look back at the old presentations that Tool did for like, you know, when we were starting this project. Was there any talk of that intersection in terms of a crosswalk in the, the work they've done in the past?
No, so, and that's just kind of where the history of the bike path comes in. So when, when the, when the town was working with MAFDOT for the bike path construction, the decision was made to remove the section of bike path through the center of town, because there was a lot of concern from various town residents and boards about the scope of the bike path that would have to be constructed by MAFDOT. So based on a lot of people's input, the decision was made that the bike path would, the bike path that MAFDOT constructed would end at Waterfield Road, would skip over the town center, and then would start again at Mount Vernon Street, basically like on the Jink side. So as a result, and then as part of the conversations that went on for several years, we talked about whether it made sense to try to add crosswalks at some locations. But there was a lot of concern by various parties about the loss of parking spaces on Mount Vernon Street and Waterfield Road. And so the decision was made at the time, and I'm not saying this was the right decision, but it just, so everybody understands kind of the thought process that was happening, you know, five or so years ago, was that bike was, instead of crossing right there, bikes would go down and use the cross, existing cross, you know, take a left or right and go down and use the existing crosswalk at the end of Waterfield Road, where it's in Mystic Valley Parkway. Now, I get that most people don't actually do that, and I personally, myself, when I'm running on the bike path, I just, you know, usually sneak up between the cars and look both ways and, and cut across the street. So I don't disagree that it's a, it makes sense to have a crosswalk there. I just don't want to put something in that is creating an unsafe condition for folks. And then we end up having an accident, which is why my recommendation was that Tool evaluate the safety of it before we went in and did something. So, Amy, to answer your question, this location was outside of the scope of their original study for the, from the Call School project.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
So can I just, just quickly review the project that will be done, designed by Tool, along Mystic Valley Parkway, will include pedestrian crossing with ramps, and will be clearly a safe pedestrian foot, all-vehicle, not all-vehicle, bike, stroller, that would be a clear crossing for people on foot. Is that true?
At, at Waterfield?
At Waterfield and Mystic Valley, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's just what it is today, where there's a crosswalk, but it'll be, that whole intersection will be tightened up, so it'll be a lot.
It'll be a shorter crosswalk, yeah.
A shorter crosswalk and a tighter turn for vehicles making that, that movement.
Okay. So I'm inclined to agree with Mariano that what we need here is sort of a short-term solution for the bike path. And then when we are looking at doing the whole plaza over, that's the time to really evaluate multiple options for this. So...
So does that mean we want DPW to just put two curb cuts in and add a crosswalk there?
A crosswalk and some bicycle signage, you know, on the street, so that bicycles, you know, people coming out see that this is a bicycle crossing. I think Tool is familiar with doing bike routes. So I guess I'm going to make a...
Again, I don't, we can't, we can't just say that this crossing is just for bikes, right? Because it's a shared-use path, so there won't just be bikes using this crossing.
It's a shared-use path.
So once you put curb cuts in, you can't just, you can't restrict it to just bicycles. You know, anybody can use a crosswalk or a curb cut, so...
Approximately, how much would a raised crosswalk cost?
You know, we've never done them in Winchester, so I don't have a good feel. It depends partly on any drainage improvements they have to do. So, you know, if there's a catch basin, you can't block drainage down the street, so you'd have to look at whether you need to add a catch basin. And it's fairly flat out there, and I don't know off the top of my head what the catch basins look like. You know, I'd say instruction-wise, probably $20,000 to $25,000 would be my guess, plus some additional money for survey and design.
Beth, do you think that we need, you know, Tool to weigh in whether or not, you know, whether or not we do a raised crosswalk, or, you know, I mean, I guess the question for us is, do we need a traffic study or a study of that location at all? Because it is, it is pretty busy, or can we just put some paint down and put some curb cuts?
So, yeah, I mean, I guess there's, there's two things, right? From a physical construction standpoint, there's, I think there's a light pole in the way, probably in one of the areas where we have to put a handicap ramp in, so there have to be some rejiggering of that. But sure, we could go in and have Jay's sidewalk contractor, whoever, go in and put two handicap ramps in and put a crosswalk there. And then I suppose DPW could, you know, measure out and move the parking spaces around. Again, my concern has just always been that we, we don't want to put a crosswalk there and create an unsafe condition, because vehicles turning from Mystic Valley Parkway onto Waterfield don't have enough time to react to that crosswalk. That's just been my concern all along, and so that's why I recommended that Tool look at the sight, sight lines there. But certainly, if the board feels that, you know, that they want to just move forward with the handicap ramps and crosswalks, I think that's something that DPW could do, or we could have one of the contractors working out there do.
So we're adding, go ahead, Chuck.
Go ahead, okay, this is real quick. I was just going to ask you also with respect to your thinking about Tools' involvement, is one of the issues sort of the precise location of it? And if that's not one of the issues they'd be looking at, then I guess I, I'm wondering what else they'd be contributing to that process, but go ahead and round.
Sorry, I was just going to say that they would evaluate whether there's adequate sight lines under the proposed conditions out there, which is obviously a lot better than what we're going to have out there today, for vehicles to be able to see and react to somebody in the crosswalk. And similarly, for pedestrians to be able to see, you know, vehicles. And the, and the other issue is just... And the, and the other issue is just how, the close proximity to, of that crosswalk to the one at Thompson Street, and making sure that vehicles have enough time to react between those two crosswalks.
Yeah, so I mean, we're adding, what, 30 feet of curb there? Maybe even more, maybe almost 50 feet of curb into Mystic Valley Parkway. So I mean, I wouldn't say we put the crosswalk now. We would only do it after that is done, so that cars have more space. And as far as space between crosswalks, there's, there's a lot more space between these two crosswalks than the ones we have on Church Street over at, with the intersection with Wildwood. So, and there doesn't seem to be an issue there as far as cars being able to stop for both.
So I guess I'm gonna move that we don't request the Tool evaluation, that we just have the DPW do the curb cuts and the ramps and the paint on the streets to provide a cross, crossing for the bike path. But after the intersection on Waterfield, the intersection of Waterfield with Mystic Valley Parkway is completed.
Second?
Second, yeah.
We'll, it could vote, obviously, but just as a added layer of discussion, I mean, part of the policy reason that we have these traffic studies is if there is an accident, there is an incident there at the location, we can show that we've done our work to identify safety standards. So when we digress from that and we go off on our own and we just paint, you know, it, it creates a risk that, you know, I'm, I'm not a traffic engineer. I'm a lawyer, so I, that's why I think, I don't, I don't know, you know, I can't look at something and say it's completely safe based on just painting lines. You know, a lot of these crosswalks and the construction that we do is the result of these studies, and it's, it's expensive. It costs a lot. But it would be nice to know that we've had a, a short-term and a long-term solution in play that we, we build towards, because it's, it's going to be one of the busiest intersections in town between the, the bike path and the Mystic Valley Parkway. And so, anyway, so I'll, I'll take a roll call vote.
Yeah, Mike, before, sorry, before we vote, I just want to kind of second that. I just, I'm not, I'm not feeling 100% comfortable of just doing this without a study. I think that, you know, I, we, we've seen pictures of what the intersection's gonna look like, obviously, from the plan. I think I, I'm more comfortable waiting until after that intersection is completed to kind of look at it. But I, I'm not sure that I, I feel 100% comfortable moving forward without having at least look at it. And I know it's, it costs, it's costly, but to Mike's point, I just think that we, we need to make sure that we're, we're dotting all of our i's with something like this, where, you know, our community's safety is at, at risk. So, anyway, I just, I, I will, I'll, I think I'll vote for it, but I just, I wanted to just put that out there. I agree with Mike that, you know, I think we just, we need to be patient. And I know the bike, the biking community is, has been very patient, and I appreciate that. But I just want to make sure that we're, we're thinking through this.
I, I mean, if we can get an SOW from Tool, so I, I mean, I'm gonna vote yes on this, but if we can get an SOW from Tool on figuring out any safety concerns that there are, because of course, we're not going to do this until after construction is done. So if we could get something that is limited to that, and it's maybe $1,000 to evaluate like the distance and just best practices for distance of a crosswalk from a, from an intersection, then I'd, I'd be more than happy. But to spend $8,000 or $9,000 to figure that out, I, I think, I think that doesn't make sense. I'd be okay with spending that much if we end up with a design for a race crosswalk to do something that clearly a lot of other municipalities are doing, that is, that when we drive through Cambridge and Somerville, those race crosswalks are, are clearly safe, and they make it much better for pedestrians and cyclists to be able to share the road. And honestly, I, I'm disappointed that we don't have one here yet. So I think that this is a great opportunity to, to have one and to see how it works. And I'd be happy to, to spend the $8,000 or $9,000 to, for a recommendation on how to make a race crosswalk work. I mean, to me, it's not a question of yes, if, yes or no, it's how do we make it work? It's clearly that we are following other municipalities here. It, that it's clear that race crosswalks work and are safer for everybody. The question is only how do we make it the best for that spot? So that's, that's my view. But if we're not going to do that, then I think a very short, just this is how many feet you need from the intersection, that shouldn't take $8,000 or $9,000.
So I could ask them to remove the concept plan that I had requested that would, you know, kind of relayed out the parking spaces and just do the site, site distance analysis if you wanted and get a price for that.
Will, couldn't we do that after, you know, after the construction that the intersection with Mystic Valley Parkway is done? While that's, while that's going on, and just go ahead and vote to proceed. The way I stated it, you know, we don't need to move ahead with the sightlines right now. A sightline study, or do, I can amend them. I don't know.
In my view, I think we proceed with the vote as it is right now. And if we get a, a proposal from Tool to evaluate what sightlines will be later, like after the construction, and it's a reasonable amount, I think we can vote that in a future meeting to do that.
So we can, sorry.
I was just gonna say, based on what Beth's saying, if she gets some feedback from Tool, in the meantime, after we vote this, you know, that they could sort of weigh in for a modest amount on precisely where this interim crosswalk would be, then that's something that I'm assuming the board could take up, you know, whenever we have that information, whenever we have that proposal.
Great.
David, did, did you have any other comments? Just because we're, we're taking a, a vote now. I don't, you know, want to keep going back and forth.
No, not really. I think just the, the reiterating earlier point that the, the, right now, there is no marking of any kind. So I, I, I fully understand, I'm a design professional. I understand the, the impetus to go to the proper design professionals to examine the, the situation. But the, you know, if Tool comes back and says, well, it's not, it's not ideal, we recommend not putting a crosswalk there, then what you're left with is the situation that we have now, which is really not safe. And I, I'm really not worried about the safety for me so much as, as for the last experienced people who are, are using it. Because it just, it doesn't, it doesn't even give drivers a hint that someone might be emerging from behind the buttresses of the, of the bridge or the, the ends of the, the railings. So I mean, that, that's my concern, is that we may not be able to achieve perfection, but at least in the, in the short term. But we can at least achieve something that is an improvement.
So I just, does it pick up on David's point? I, I don't think that'd be a situation where we, Tool would say, like, you absolutely can't put a crosswalk here, but it might be a situation where they'd say, you know, we need to remove two additional parking spaces on the bridge so that you can see the pedestrians in the crosswalk or something like that. Like, that's the type of thing that would expect them to be able to make sure that the pedestrians are visible in the crosswalk, because the last thing I want to do is create a crossing. And people feel very safe in crossings sometimes. And we all know that, you know, you, you as the pedestrian or bicyclist have to be responsible for your own safety in those crossings. And I just want to make sure that people, we're not putting people in a position where they're in an unsafe situation because cars can't see them.
Right. Agreed.
So this is Lisa. I just want to weigh in. So I, I actually did not invite Jay to this call, but I am on the phone with him on the other line. And he had mentioned that, you know, if DPW were to install the crosswalks, then they would probably need to remove parking spaces to create the 20-foot sightlines in either, either way, either direction.
Yeah, I mean, there's no way, we're, we're gonna lose one parking spot. You're looking at the image on the screen right now. We're gonna lose that first parking spot on the, on the Aborona parking lot side there. And then we're gonna lose at least two spaces on the post office side. I just, when we relay that out, I don't know how it will all fit, so it's hard to say whether we'll lose more than two. But I would say at least two spaces on the other side.
We will also gain parking spots on the post office side because we're extending the street out onto MBP.
Right. So I think we'll gain one spot at the end of Waterfield Road where it comes to Mystic Valley Parkway. But I don't know, without doing those measurements, I don't know how those spaces will lay out. So, you know, it might, we might not get the full amount of spaces back once we kind of move things around. I, I haven't done, we haven't done those measurements, obviously, to figure out how that parking would lay out.
Beth, I'm not, I'm not questioning any of that, but I'm just kind of curious, why would two spots be necessary on the post office side for the reception?
So if you look at where the, where it comes out now, it kind of comes out between two parking spaces. So.
Right, I mean, could they be kind of repainted?
Well, both those parking spaces would have to be removed to get the 20 feet on either side of the crosswalk. And then again, I haven't looked at, you know, once you figure out how much space is left and then divide it that by the length of a parking space, I, that's what I haven't ever looked at to figure out. And that's what I had asked Tool to do, is to help figure out that concept plan of how those spaces would lay out.
Understood.
So, sorry to continue the discussion while there's a, a motion's been seconded. Susan, would you mind just kind of restating your motion there, just so everybody's clear what we're, we're doing? I, I know I kind of messed it up a little bit.
Okay, so I move that we do not move ahead with the Tool evaluation at this time. We do go ahead and have DPW do the curb cuts and bike path markings, provided that the DPW, DPW does that work after the construction project at Mystic Valley Parkway and Waterfield is, has been completed?
I'll take a roll call vote. Mariano?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yeah.
And no for me. So the motion passes four to one. Thank you. The next item, I think, while we've got Beth here, is the MBTA proposal, I think, the letter.
Yep. I don't know, has the board gotten a copy of the draft letter?
I saw it yesterday.
Yes.
Okay. So I, David, you're welcome to stay for this conversation as well.
Oh, sure.
David's part of the working group who's been reviewing things. So we received last Tuesday a copy of what the MBTA is calling their 100% progress in the middle, so I guess it's like 99% of the way there. So I, I emailed out that, those plans to members of the working group who were able to get me back some comments up till yesterday, and then I put the, a draft of those comments together in a letter. Does the board want me to go through some of the key changes that the MBTA has proposed?
I think that would be helpful. Beth?
Okay. So since the last design meeting, the MBTA has made some pretty significant changes to the station design on the outbound side. So they have removed the ramp at Shore Road, and they have pushed the whole outbound platform to the south. So now there'll be a, a ramp in the, so working from the southern end north, in the Aborona lot, there will be a ramp, a large ramp structure that we hadn't previously looked at, but is now proposed. Plus, there'll be an elevator and a set of stairs basically right at the intersection with Waterfield Road. And then behind Thompson Street, there will be a set of stairs and an elevator. That elevator will be very, very, very close to the buildings at the corner of Thompson Street and the Rotary, which I think there's a gym there, and I'm not sure what the other business is in that building. So those are the, the big changes that have been proposed. And as a result, the, the MBTA is no longer looking for temporary or permanent easements on Shore Road. They're looking for temporary easements in the Aborona lot, on Lareway Road, in Waterfield Road, and then a permanent easement in, in the Waterfield parking lot as well. Does anybody have any questions on those changes? Okay. So based on the comments I got back from the working group, there are a couple of big, big-ticket items that, and if you have the letter here, that were proposed to be addressed by the MBTA. The first is the material finishes. So none of that is really detailed in the plans yet, and there's a request for the town to be involved in, in the discussions regarding those material finishes. The next piece is an item that was brought up by David, was just the, the scale of the cast stone finish. And I'm sure he can talk more eloquently about that than I can. The second piece, which we requested and continue to be concerned about, we've raised this in many meetings. And so on the inbound side, so on the, on the town common side, the MBTA is still proposing to have the platform extend over Quill Rotary, and they are placing a pier, an additional pier in the Rotary to support that platform extension. There's been a lot of concern by the working group about what that will look like. We've asked several times if the T would, as they've done on the outbound side, if they would push that whole, whole platform south so they could avoid that extension over the Rotary. And they've, they've told Lisa and I on several occasions that that's not something they're willing to do at this point. So David came up with what I thought was a very good compromise position, was that we request that they, you know, they do whatever work for the foundation for the pier and whatever work they need to do to, to reinforce the abutment, but they not actually construct that platform extension just yet. They're, they're designing a station to run with a nine-car train set, which not being a commuter rail rider myself, I, I don't know the specifics, but I, as I understand, they only run maybe six or seven cars at this point. So they're designing the, the platform for future expansion, which, given everything going on the wor, in the world, and just the general uncertainty with the T as a whole, maybe isn't in the near future. So the idea would be that they, they build the, kind of the substructure there, but they don't actually build the platform extension yet, and that could be done on a future date. So that's what's being proposed in the letter. One of the other, I guess the two other big items was the platform level signage, which is gonna be very visible from the town common side. So we've tried to propose that the board, that, that the MBTA try to screen that a little bit from the town common side and, and push it further in. Right now, it's, those signs are gonna be in line with the railings, so it'll be very visible. So we've asked them to try to either reduce the size of that signage or to, to move it inboard of the railings. This is probably the, I don't know, David, the 10th time we've made that request, so.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if it's gonna get any, get any traction this time around, but I think we'll continue to push it.
Hey, Beth, can I?
Yep.
Can I ask a quick question? When you say put the signage inbo, inboard, does that mean more visible from the train? So facing the train track? Okay.
Yeah, so right now, it's, the railing and the signage is integrated. So the request would be that they kind of. So the request would be that they kind of take it out of the railing piece and move it, you know, on the plat, to the platform side.
Okay, thank you.
Lighting has been a concern, and we've noted all along that we think the proposed light poles are too tall. So that comment is repeated here. Not very glamorous, but pigeon protection has been a concern all along. We have a problem now is anybody who walks under those underpasses knows of pigeons roosting and not being very pleasant for pedestrians walking under there. So we've asked that they make sure that that is, that that is addressed. And then status of the coordination with the Mass Historical Commission, which has been an ongoing question. And then there's a series of very detailed comments on the plans. One of my biggest concerns is how they will actually construct that elevator behind the Thompson Street buildings. It's not on town property, it's on the T's property, but it's very close to those buildings. And so one of my concerns has just been about the constructability and the impact to that adjacent building and those tenants during construction. I think those are probably, oh, they have a traffic detour plan right now that shows, and I'm not sure how long they propose to do this, but they're proposing reversing the traffic flow on Thompson Street. So the one-way traffic goes from Waterfield towards Main Street, which we've never talked to the public safety folks about that. Again, I'm not sure that that's a great idea, so that was something that I brought up in my comments. And yeah, so again, there's a bunch of other very detailed comments here, but that kind of hits the high points, I think. David, I don't know if you have anything else you wanted to mention?
No, I think that that was pretty much it. Those are the biggies.
Any comments or questions from board members? Beth, what's our timeline here moving forward?
So they have asked us to get comments back to them two days ago. So they gave us a week to review the 100% plans. My goal was to get this memo out to them today, since I've gotten feedback from pretty much everybody on the, on the working group at this point.
It was a 340-page set, so it takes its time to go through.
Yeah, a week was not a long time.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna say just thank you for turning this around so quickly and flagging all of these things and putting this together in a way that's understandable for them. So I think that it's a great letter. Thank you for doing it.
Sure, thank you. And thanks to everybody. David, I never be able to contribute it. It was very much a group effort.
Great. So Beth, it sounds like it's all set to send out, so just go ahead and do that. Great, thank you.
Great. I'll do that later today.
Thanks, Beth. Appreciate it. And thank David as well for, I know that we've kind of put you at a heightened level of participation on a couple of these projects. And the MBTA one is, has been a real big one. So I'm glad to see that we're finally moving forward with it. So thank you.
Yeah, me too. Good.
Imagine how much free time you're gonna have when this is, drugs. Thank you. Appreciate it. Lisa, what, what else did we have up next to tackle?
So we have two.
Excuse me, but I'll check out.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm gonna do the same unless there's anything else you have for me.
Nope.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So we have two, two things. So one is the warrant article regarding the citizens petition and voting to push that off until the fall. So Dan Nakamoto and John Miller are supportive of deferring their citizens petition that they put together for the fall. So our town council, Mina, said that this can happen with a vote of the select board. However, if the select board does defer the article, then the select board owns the article as their proponent. You can still vote to not support it. So this is just a vote that's needed by all of you to decide to postpone it. And then by next Thursday at the latest, we need to vote on sort of the total warrant. So we're just trying to clean up some of these pieces right now.
So Lisa, procedurally, so 10 or more residents can put an article on for a town meeting and then it's theirs. But if we decide to continue it, then it becomes ours, even though we're not necessarily indicating our support for it. We're just, we're just putting it on the warrant ourselves. So I, I know you, I know you said that. I just wanted to clarify that. Any comments or questions?
Lisa, can you just summarize the?
What's the content of it?
You know, I didn't, Mark, do you have that in front of you? I know Mark's on the line.
This is the one to require a town meeting to have electronic voting. Is that right?
Is this the one where they want, they want a list of the votes, so they want it almost like roll call?
Mark, are you muted, Mark?
Yeah, let me see if I can pull it up. It is for the electronic voting. So yes, for recording votes is what Mark is. So I guess if you're doing electronic voting, then you are, in essence, recording individual votes as well.
So I mean, my biggest concern is that the warrant article doesn't appropriate any money. I mean, obviously, doing electronic voting, it's not free. So, you know, I think that we shouldn't, yeah, I think that given the, where we are with trying to do a remote town meeting or something like that, pushing it to the fall is fine. But I think that the proponents of the article need to figure out where they're going to find the funding to do this. So if Mr. Miller and Nakamoto are looking to increase taxes for this, then I think they should, you know, put that on their, on their petition.
So again, just to clarify too, it's not really a substantive vote on our part, more of a procedural vote. So whether to move it, the moderator has indicated to us that his expectation is that we really have a very narrow scope for this upcoming town meeting. And so we're, we're saying that to people across the board, that if it can wait until the fall, then it should. So. Any other comments from board members? And I.
So just trying to understand, so if we, if we say we, if we vote to postpone this, then we basically are saying in the fall, we will sponsor this. But it doesn't mean that we're taking a stance on the content of it.
That's right.
And do we have other, what are the other options? Do we have other options or?
The other options are to have it be on the spring town meeting warrant and taken up as an article at town meeting. So, you know, we're.
So, so sorry, Mark, Mark, for some reason, his microphone isn't working, so he just called me on his cell. So he said that the, the people who are filing the petition will agree to pull it off. So they're the ones who have to pull it off the spring town meeting warrant. And they will do that if the select board votes to put it on the fall town meeting. And it also means they don't have to recirculate the petition and sort of do the process all over again. So it's, it's not that you would necessarily be voting to move the petition from spring to fall. It would be that you would be agreeing to put it on such that they would pull it off.
Okay.
I mean, functionally, it's the same, right, Lisa? I mean, it's, it will be on, if we vote, if they pull it off in the spring, it will be on in the fall.
Yeah, I mean, that's fine.
Spring, I believe they might have to recirculate the petition. If, you know, if you vote to put it on the fall, they could still not withdraw it. But I think the whole understanding is that, that this would be the procedure, that the board would give them assurance it would be on the fall town meeting and they would, they would pull it for the spring.
I mean, they've met the requirements to be on in the spring, right?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's fine, you know. Well, I'm okay with putting it on the fall. They would meet, you know, it's 10 signatures anyway, right? So it wouldn't be that hard to, for, to get the requirements for the fall. So I'm okay with us agreeing to them not having to go and get 10 signatures for the fall.
So are you looking for a motion?
Please.
So I move that we defer the citizens petition for town meeting by Mr. Nakamoto and Mr. Miller to fall town meeting.
There you go.
I'll take a roll call vote. All in favor? Mariano?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And Jackie?
Yes.
The motion carries five to zero unanimously. Thank you. And you'll reach out to them, Lisa, and let them know.
Yeah.
Thank you. And the only, did you have anything else, Lisa, that you wanted to take up? Okay, good.
Under, under state of emergency, we need to discuss the new real estate order. So I sent this, I sent this all of you with some red-marked changes. And then based on the feedback I've gotten since then, I've added a couple of things. So let me just move, move through this so I can sort of show all the changes. So the first would be that this would be effective midnight tonight. So it'd be when the current order was extended to and expires. I added broker tours in front of open house format. So it would effectively mean that broker tours are also prohibited. And again, this is per the recommendations of the Realtors in the letter. In section 1A, I had changed the not to exceed four to not to exceed two. And I had just, I just forgotten to put two written out. I just put, change the number two. So that's just consistent here. Added the plus agent, so not, not to exceed two people plus the agent in the property at one time. And the plus agent was a language that was in the Realtor letter. Under 1B, adding, so properties may be shown while inhabited by the property owner or vacant. And then red says reasonable notice of no less than 48 hours to tenants is required for rental properties. Except any properties occupied by tenant in a high-risk category may only be shown with a tenant's permission. So this sort of except any property occupied by tenant in high-risk category was sort of a, a more recent discussion that we haven't had as a group. Number C or section C, the CDC recommendations, I added three additional recommendations that were listed in the Realtor letter. So you can see it's number one, number two, number three. The face covering and gloves worn by all parties present, the shoe covers. And then the, that the buyers, the buyer agent should avoid touching surfaces, including cabinets, doorknobs, and other surfaces during the showing. And then number two, this was Mariano's suggestion, the listing agent shall be responsible for ensuring that all the conditions in this order are followed and cleaning surfaces after each showing.
Thank you, Lisa, for pulling this together so quickly too. I know that there were a lot of edits and changes kind of filtering in. The only question I had as far as section 1B where it says may only be shown with tenants' permission. Typically, I'd like to see that be written permission and then, you know, maybe in parentheses, you know, email or text is fine. Just because a lot of times you'll see people say, oh, here's, you can see that I called them and we talked about it over the phone and they said yes. And, you know, there's, there's nothing to, you know, kind of support that. So I think we're trying to create less, less confusion and anxiety, but.
My only, this is Amy, my only concern with that is that how, how are we defining high risk? And how are we enforcing? I mean, this could be, that clause makes me nervous. I just think that there's an opportunity for people to say, well, I'm high risk. I don't want people coming into the house. And whether, I'm sure that, you know, we certainly want to protect those that are at risk, but and I, I don't know how we get around that, but I just wanted to bring it up as a conversation because I think it, it can be a little bit arbitrary in terms of, you know, if they're self-selecting as high risk.
That's a good point. I was just looking at it written out here, thinking we could say high risk for COVID-19 as defined by the CDC.
All right, I had asked Jen Murphy if she could jump on. She, she can't, so let me, let me see if I find a readily available CDC high-risk category for COVID-19.
Yeah, the CDC has a listing called people who need extra precautions who are at high risk for severe illness. So I think what Susan said about using the CDC guidelines for high risk makes sense.
Yeah. That's great.
So we could just say in a high-risk category or by a tenant who is deemed high-risk by the CDC.
Well, obviously, the CDC is making that determination to be like consistent with the CDC guidance or something like that.
Yeah, as defined by something.
Yeah, or I also think we should be mindful that, you know, what's considered high risk may only be known to that occupant of the premises. So, you know, we're not going to have 100% certainty here, and I think we just have to recognize that.
Agreed.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we can't get involved in HIPAA, stuff like that. So yeah, you're right.
Yeah, that's where we can kind of, you know, get too far down the rabbit hole with this. I mean, I think it's a.
So the, the cleaning provision that Mariano proposed might be helpful in that sense. Right? I think if there's, maybe the focus is on the more stringent cleaning. So maybe we, you know, we sort of specify, you know, exactly what we think that that would be. You know, including some sort of, you know, notification if, if they know that anybody that had entered the property might have shown symptoms, even though a lot of people are asymptomatic. And then maybe for the high-risk categories, there is a, maybe right now it's a suggestion. So maybe saying that if, you know, if people know that there is a high-risk tenant or a tenant that falls into a high-risk category, that they consider taking extra precautions or going virtual or something to that effect, where we're at least drawing attention to that issue.
So Lisa, you're saying that would be, you would add that second as an independent sentence or something about?
So, and B, so if we don't want to say that, if the, so we don't want to make it sort of a definitive statement, I would say, I would put a period here as just saying reasonable notice of no less than 48 hours attendance is required for rental properties. And then maybe say that, like, I don't even, extra consideration. like, I don't even know, extra consideration should be given to property occupied by tenant in a high risk category. Something. Something like that, just like extra consideration should be given to properties occupied, you know, by tenant in a high risk category as defined CDC. Category, and a tenant that is high risk for severe illness. And then a number two, just, we could figure out something more robust about the cleaning that needs to be done.
Something along the lines of cleaning surfaces after each showing, cleaning surfaces as advised by CDC after each showing, something like that. Whatever the standard would be, what CDC says you need to do. And I'm feeling this is out of my league. This is what the health department should be. Thanks.
Sure, okay. Okay, so Jen, just to bring you up to speed, what we're sort of struggling with right now, since the last iteration you saw, is this high risk category. So right now, we're thinking that we would say, so we're concerned about the high risk category, but we're also concerned about violating anybody's HIPAA. So you know, not forcing tenants to reveal or have to reveal that they're in a high risk category. So maybe saying things like extra consideration should be given to properties occupied by tenant that is at high risk for severe illness as defined by the CDC. So that's, I know, not very definitive. We could still keep the exceptions, but put the the burden on the tenant to say that they're in a high risk category. But then the question is, you know, what kind of documentation would they need? And would that open up a can of worms? And then the third piece is that we added a sort of a number two that the listing agent should be responsible for ensuring that all conditions in this order are followed and the cleaning surfaces after each showing. So we're thinking about making the cleaning more robust. So for example, if, if we know that, so, you know, you don't know if somebody's coughing or sneezing or breathing heavily, right? And particulates are airborne for a certain amount of time. So maybe there's some sort of specific cleaning that we can recommend where I know, I'm just sort of making it, but let's say, you know, particles airborne for three hours. So the cleaning should be done three hours, you know, after the showing so that things are settled. So things are still not airborne. And then, then there has to be a certain amount of hours between after the cleaning and when, you know, the tenant can come back to the building, right? That's just an example of something I'm thinking about if we want to be more robust on the cleaning piece. Or there's types of cleaning supplies or a methodology that needs to be done.
Yeah, I believe all of that information is on the CDC website. So rather than being so prescriptive, can we simply defer to that? Because I, I just, I worry that A, the information on the CDC site, who knows, could potentially change as we learn further about, you know, virus being airborne or, or other information as it evolves. So I don't want to paint anybody into a corner through, through language in the order rather than simply just defer to the latest information.
Okay, so there is on the CDC website, a cleaning and disinfection for households, interim recommendations for US households with suspected or confirmed COVID-19. So that has, yeah, that has a lot of, like, this is what you do with hard, non-pore surfaces. This is what you do with pore surfaces, electronics, linens, cleanings. I mean, but also
They also give very, they give a complete listing, an abundance of products that are, you know, adequate to kill the coronavirus. So you can find everything and anything right on that site.
I mean, could we say something that it, you know, like, a conversation should take, like, between the homeowner and the real estate agent to agree for them, the two of them agree on what cleaning procedures should take place? What the homeowner is comfortable with?
Yes.
Well, I mean, I would say that the person who lives at the home, right? Because
Right.
if it's a tenant, that's not necessarily the homeowner.
Right, sorry, yes, the occupant. And we can, we can mention that, you know, there's, there are CDC guidelines that can be referenced in their conversations. But leave it up to the two of them to determine what, what the occupant feels most comfortable with. Jen, does that sound right to you? Or do you think we should just speak to?
The latest version of the order, I believe, had a 48-hour pre-notice to an occupant. And that would be the time where an occupant, if they feel comfortable revealing their medical condition or high risk category, they could feel free to do that during that time period and make arrangements regarding that, but also to work out perhaps an adequate cleaning plan that would take place subsequently. So that 48-hour window would be critical to work all of that out.
Okay, so I just put the extra consideration should be given. And then after that, I put comma, including working out a cleaning plan with the tenant.
Well, or, but this applies to homeowners as well. So the cleaning plan piece.
Not tenant, correct?
Not just tenants. Any occupant of the home, so homeowner or tenant. So maybe it, maybe it is a separate.
Sorry, Mike, where should the permission piece go?
I mean, I'm thinking that it makes sense to have it as number two, the cleaning piece. And then just to pull it out from the part that talks about the rental properties. And then just, just say that, you know, tenant, or, you know, occupant or, you know, homeowner or tenant should work with their broker or their real estate agent to determine the best, you know, plan for cleaning after the showing.
Lisa, you could, instead of adding that at the end, just say, have this number two say, listing agent shall be responsible for ensuring that all the conditions in this order are followed. And cleaning surfaces according to the cleaning plan with, according to the cleaning plan referred to in one, whatever it is above, after each showing. Cleaning surfaces according to the cleaning plan referred to in 1B above. BC, whatever it is.
Yeah, so 1B doesn't require a cleaning plan, because it just has it as sort of like an including, this is an option under extra consideration. So what I was thinking is that maybe we go back and we actually sort of specify that, that, that part of the reasonable notice or, or part of this has to be that they have to have a cleaning plan in place. I was just trying to figure out where in the process that would make sense.
I mean, I almost, I, I think it's a separate, I, I just think maybe it's, it's 1D is the clean, the piece around cleaning. It's sort of the end of the process. And it just, it's a separate, it's just its own separate clause that talks about the onus is on, the onus is on the, the real estate agent and the occupant to determine an appropriate cleaning plan. And then we can reference the CDC recommendation.
So it almost, just, just so that this is making sense to me, it's almost like 1B is what you do before. 1C is what you do during, and then two is what we do after. And so that's why I was trying to figure out maybe how to it might be semantics, but just, just to sort of rework this a little bit so that it kind of makes a little bit more sense. Because we do, we want this to be, we don't want this to be subject to too much wide interpretation. And then as well as, if we're saying you guys have to work out a cleaning plan, then what if the tenant, occupant, homeowner says, well, you know, I, no matter how robust the cleaning plan is, I disagree with it, and therefore it's not being worked out. So I mean, not, not to put, you know, Jen on the spot, but let's say a tenant has a problem with lack of notice, lack of cleaning plan. Is there recourse then, you know, are they then calling your office, Jen? They're calling me. You know, what do we do? Do we say no showing can happen until we see a cleaning plan?
That is a good question. I'd rather not insert myself into the middle of that. However, you know, normally when I enforce the housing code, there's oh, sorry, so, so there's Consumer Protection Act, correct? And that occupants are allowed to take advantage of that when they feel like their rights have been violated. And I'm wondering if, A, that's one route they could take, but that obviously puts the burden on them to contact legal services. And in this same time, it's a little tricky. The, I think the quickest way would be for them to call us and send out order and try to work it through. That's why I was trying not to be, I was suggesting, let's not be super prescriptive, only because, you know, getting, endorsing a lot of this, if we were to get complaints, would be a little tricky. But nonetheless, I guess, yeah, they would call us.
Yeah, so I, I'm just reading the policy that Mayor, Mayor Walsh put in place around showing, real estate showings. And his is definitely less prescriptive. I mean, it says individual showings for properties for sale should mirror the above guidelines for rental showings, including minimizing contact with others, staying six feet away from others, washing hands frequently, using hand sanitizer, and wiping down surfaces touched. So he doesn't really address additional cleaning. So I don't know if that's where we want to, where we want to land as well. And it doesn't address the airborne piece, but I, I mean.
So what I, what I've done is I've, I'm trying to move the cleaning plan away from this high risk category into the general category as a baseline expectation. So I've moved, I basically moved it from the third sentence of the second sentence. So reasonable notice of no less than 48 hours. Tenant slash occupants is required for rental properties, comma, and a cleaning plan should be in place and available for viewing. I don't know if that's the right word, but again, trying to make it, I'm trying to basically say that we're actually saying you have to have a cleaning plan, but then not making it prescriptive.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
So cleaning plans, I'll put it up here, cleaning plan should follow the CDC guidelines.
Hello. And the cleaning plan should be determined by the listing agent? Is that what you said below? So we should probably
Yeah, so the, it, it says that, so I guess we should say reasonable notice by the, what are we calling them? By the?
Listing agent?
The seller, just want to be consistent.
Down below, it's listing agent.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Okay. Okay, reasonable notice by the listing agent of no less than 48 hours to the tenant slash occupants. So I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna take out homeowners. I mean, we're talking about mostly rental properties here, right? I think that works.
So, sorry, I'm just, I feel like I'm beating a dead horse. I, I just, the cleaning plan should apply to all properties, not just rentals. Right?
So, I mean, the, yes, but the, the listing agent works for the, for the property owner, right? So
Right.
That, that's why, I, I mean, to me, 1B is to ensure that it happens for tenants who don't have a say on, you know, like, the homeowner already controls the process. The tenant doesn't, right? So 1B is, is setting in place for protection of the tenant who doesn't control the process.
Okay, yeah, I just, the homeowners don't know who's coming into their homes either, so. But I'm fine, I'm, I'm fine with this too.
It might be clearer to have a period in 1B, a period after required for rental properties, period. And then just start a new sentence and just say, a cleaning plan should be in place.
I'm gonna make that a whole nother bullet point. Okay. I mean, it doesn't say here, call Jen Murphy and here's her cell phone number, but you know, it's. Jen, do we still have you?
Lisa, one more thing, then in point two, just change the reference from listed in one B to listed in one C.
Thank you. Okay.
Lisa, one more thing, sorry. On, on B, we should probably, do you want to put properties may be shown while inhabited by the property owner, comma, tenant or vacant?
Uh, okay, so properties may be shown while inhabited by the property owner or vacant.
Comma, tenant or vacant. Cause we're.
Just, how about just while inhabited or vacant?
Yeah, perfect.
Yeah, we actually, we added by the property owner and I'm actually not sure because I had that underlined. I'm not really sure why. Um, I think this is much more.
Yeah, that, that's better. Yeah, thanks, Jen.
Okay. Okay.
Lisa, do you mind forwarding it to me? It's just so I can see the final draft? When, when we're done.
Okay, I just sent it to you and Carrie right now.
Thank you.
And when we're making this effective tonight, is that right?
We are, and let's see, this is, okay, so this is a joint order. So Jen, you'll, you'll take a look at it before tonight as well.
Yes.
Um, so I think, I think, you know, it probably giving Mike a little bit of latitude to sign this with some input from the Board of Health. So if there's some minor changes.
So I move that we issue this emergency order to prohibit, well, now I'm, now I'm curious about the title, but I move that we approve and authorize Mike to sign this emergency order concerning house showings of real property as presented and revised at this meeting. Sub, and subject to minor edits by the Board of Health.
All in favor, I'll take a roll call vote. Mariano?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Amy?
Yeah.
And yes for me, Jackie, I don't know if you're still there. Jackie had to jump off on a call for a few minutes, so she'll be back. So, yes for me, so the motion carries four to zero. Thank you very much, Lisa, for working on that. I know that was, you know, quite a bit that we kind of jammed in at the last minute there, so.
So actually, sorry, Mike, before Jen jumps off too, so there's a good point that Susan made about the title of this. Should it really be to prohibit open house showings, restricting? I just changed the word to restrict because it is putting restrictions on open houses. Does that, does that make more sense?
Well, no, I mean, open houses are, open houses are prohibited. It's just to.
Guidelines for showing.
Yeah.
To ensure.
For showing, yeah.
Or maybe to ensure safety in real estate showings.
I would just say guidelines for showings of real property.
For showings of real property.
Yeah, I mean, I think you can remove open house from the title.
Yeah, because it's only one part of it. Okay, to restrict.
And that was already part of the old order, so.
Okay, great.
Thank you. Lisa, was there anything else that we needed, Jen, for?
Jen, any updates? Anything you want to share?
Um, let's see, I'm trying to find out at what point in time our two long-term care facilities will have universal testing onsite and the infection control audit verification onsite. This is something that I've been asking for, many in local health have been asking for, for quite some time. And, and both of our long, both of our SULDA facilities have applied for additional funding. And so the stipulation with that funding is that they have to adhere to a bunch of requirements like the universal testing. So I'm trying to get more information about when that will actually happen. So that's, that's good news for the nursing homes in town.
And Jen, just to clarify, so the, the ones you haven't mentioned, it's not that they're not applying for funding. It, the other one that you didn't mention already had the National Guard come in, right?
Yeah, so our other two facilities are assisted living residences and they don't, they're not eligible to apply for that funding. It's, it's, it's just the facilities that are licensed by healthcare quality at DPH. So that would take care of the two nursing centers in town, the Aberjonah and the Winchester Nursing Center. The other two facilities, the assisted living, one, the Malverden House, has had no cases of employees or residents to date. And two, as you said, Lisa, the National Guard has already been out to the gables, which was very beneficial because several more people were identified as positive and asymptomatic. And that's the benefit of doing this. And I've been trying to convey that to our long-term care facilities for quite some time. But in any event, that is hopefully a good, a good piece of news regarding the nursing homes. And I do have masks to hand out. I'm trying to formulate a plan. I have about close to 5,000 masks and thinking that we will distribute them to people 70 and older, as well as medically compromised, perhaps do a drive-through or we can hand out two per person. And if we have any leftover, certainly could hand them out to anyone in need, but at least trying to start with the most vulnerable first. So I'm working with Philip on, on the best way to, to do this as quickly as possible.
And Jen, I spoke with Senator Lewis yesterday and he said that Wakefield just did something like this, so.
Yeah, many, a few communities have, in, in some cases, it's, it was open to the public in general, but that's clearly not a good plan. They ran out within 20 minutes in some cases. So I think sticking to our most vulnerable makes sense at this point, given, I would like to give two or three per person and obviously those will go very quickly. So, but yeah, several towns have, have done this. And so I think I would hope to order more if needed, or at least perhaps at the time of handing it out, we could also provide a little insert with other information about where people could get perhaps cheap cloth face coverings or additional disposable masks. So I, I hope to provide all that very soon.
So are these cloth masks or disposable ones?
No, sorry, these are disposable. These I ordered from a vendor about a month ago with the state funding that came down to us. We also anticipate getting some of the CARES Act money, I believe, which perhaps that will allow us to buy further supplies for the, for the community if we see fit at some point.
Yeah, cloth masks would be a great thing to be able to hand out to people in need.
Right, and I know, is it, Lisa, the Unitarian Church that's actually making them and selling them for a dollar?
Oh, I don't know. That's, that's great.
Yeah, we gotta email about that, so.
Okay, so I was gonna touch base with them and see if they would be able to make them, you know, sort of in the mass quantity and that we could give their direct information.
And then, you know, the, the list that Phil might have of people that are homebound, you know, so we can, if we're delivering them meals and we can, we can deliver masks to them as well.
Right, right.
Or if they're limited homebound, you know, if they're, we're giving them grocery gifts. So there's, there's, um, you don't have to require everybody to do the drive-through.
Correct, no, correct, exactly. Philip has a plan for delivering them as well.
Okay, great.
And that's it, unless anyone has any questions.
I'm all set. Thanks, Jen.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer.
Appreciate it. So, um, just still under the state of emergency, kind of heading for topics. I was wondering if it would make sense for us to have a conversation about our own local advisory board for reopening things. You know, there's a lot of conversations between the schools and the chamber, Board of Health, sports, you know, golf courses, and there's a lot of very siloed groups of people, even the real estate community. It was nice to see that they kind of pulled together their own group to advise on guidance during their showings and what their expectations were. But I, I think as the, the conversation moves towards what things are going to look like in the upcoming months, it, it may be helpful to have a smaller group of representatives be discussing the impact of these things on an ongoing basis. So I, I, they're doing that certainly at the state level and really engaged and it, it was something that just occurred to me and I mentioned to Susan, so I apologize for not giving anybody advance notice of the, of discussion of it. And so I apologize, Lisa, too. But I, I don't know if there are any thoughts on it. It was just, just an idea.
Maybe I can sort of present the stuff that's happening right now. So on a, on a broader scale, actually, the part of the conversation I had with Senator Lewis last night was sort of a concern that the state's reopening committee was not very inclusive. It was very CEO-driven. So there was a lot of, I think, small businesses, especially like immigrant-owned businesses or sort of mom and pop stores that are feeling a little bit left out. There's also a, maybe a sense that there might not be as much municipal input as there needs to be, just given that every city in town is, is different. So that's the larger conversation on the more local conversation. So I've been looking at reopening in a couple of buckets. So I haven't been thinking about reopening myself as one thing. So there is the reopening of town services and/or public buildings, which is very individualized per building, per department, and even per individual. So that, I think, at least because I'm involved with it, is, is a much more robust process because we have, you know, surveys and you know, we're sharing sample plans with department heads and, you know, working, working out things there. The chamber meetings, there were people that volunteered for a, like a chamber reopening committee. And I'll be honest, I, I haven't heard any feedback from that. So I don't know if people volunteered. I don't know if Craig had put something together or not. So that's something I can reach out to her and say, you know, do you have a chamber reopening committee? Or should we pull them into something a little bit broader than that? So just your, just your thoughts. And then there was the, the, the public safety piece, which is you know, very much a collaboration between the, the, you know, the Board of Health and elected officials and public input. You know, what are we doing with parks and playgrounds? And then, you know, the schools have a very, very sort of complex process ahead of them as well. So thinking about the reopening in, in those buckets, I guess the thought that I have is, do you feel there needs to be a broader umbrella committee? Do you feel like Winchester needs to be much more engaged in an advocacy role on a regional or state level? So I mean, I'm in touch with individual members of the state's reopening committee just because they're like friends and colleagues of mine, but I'm not, I'm not necessarily privy to the, you know, the, I think they met for like 13 hours over two days recently. And, you know, my full involvement of that was, was, you know, hearing from people individually, but then getting the PowerPoint presentation afterwards and sort of getting a rundown of what they discussed. So again, there's some sort of interaction that way. Or do you think that any of the, you know, any of the buckets need more individualized attention? So for example, do select board members want to be engaged in, you know, various, various buckets? So like the, the town buildings and town services reopening. So I've been trying to share every phase with select board members, so showing you sort of the results of the survey and then I'll be showing you sort of the, like a draft phase one reopening plan next week. But maybe you want to be more intimately involved. So maybe you want to be, for example, involved in the drafting of the survey, not just hearing the survey results. So let me know if you want to be more engaged that way. And I think that the chamber piece, I, I definitely think there should be a collaboration there. So I'll reach out to Craig and I'll see if they need help forming that group.
I, I think the idea too was that, you know, there would be kind of representatives from each group, you know, it would be town manager, superintendent, you know, even maybe director of athletics, chamber, I mean, all of these groups that you know, their decisions affect other groups and what's going on. And because there's just a, a ton of meetings and I, I think when May 18th comes, there's going to be recommendations from the state advisory board and everybody's going to be kind of scrambling to see what's going to happen at the local level. And I know, you know, from hearing Lieutenant Governor, I mean, she was saying that, you know, on May 18th, the expectation is there'll be guidance. It's not that the light switch is going to turn on and everybody's going to run back to pre-pandemic, you know, lifestyle. And it, you may be in a, a situation where, like a, having a restaurant where you can reopen with certain guidelines, but if you're not following those guidelines and you're not prepared, then you're not going to reopen, you know, so. So at a very local level, I think, you know, some of those conversations, I mean, I, that town hall will be reopening and that impacts other departments and other, I, I, I just don't know, just allows for more flexibility is what I was hoping and getting all the people in the, in the same, same room at the same time.
Lisa, maybe we should suggest, I know we have the media, the standing meeting tomorrow morning with the chamber group. So I can reach out to Craig and just see if we can add that to the agenda and make sure it doesn't get glossed over. So just kind of revisit it tomorrow morning and then, you know, I, I'd be happy to work with them and you, Lisa, on that to make sure that it is representative, at least from the business perspective. I'm watching Pennsylvania really closely. And they've just, they're, they have sort of a green, yellow, red type of phasing structure where there's like 24 counties that are fairly rural and don't have significant case of COVID and are now, have just been switched as of tomorrow from red to yellow. And it's been interesting to see kind of, so it's just, I think, I don't know what the state level, I haven't been following it all that closely, what they're planning from a reopening, but it's been interesting to see sort of the local versus state. Say that again, I'm sorry.
Yeah, they are, they are, they do have like a, I think it's a red, yellow, green color code.
They do, okay, yeah. So it's been interesting to see that, how the, how our little town has, in Pennsylvania has sort of taken it on from a reopening standpoint. Using the, the state as a guide, so. I think Mike's right. I think there's so many different constituencies in town that should be represented, churches, you know, some of the sporting organizations. Because I think there's, we want to make sure we're hearing from everyone. And like you said, there's a trickle down. When one group does something, there's going to be a trickle down for others.
So I see that Jackie just joined. So I see that Jackie just joined. Jackie, just to bring you up to speed, we just started talking about whether we need a reopening committee and what that would look like, and and just talking about various efforts happening already for reopening planning and what more needs to be done.
Thank you Lisa, and I apologize, I had to just jump off for like 10 minutes, so for a work call, but I appreciate it. And seems like an important topic to be discussing.
So do you all want to just send me ideas of categories, individuals, organizations that you think would, should be engaged in some sort of reopening committee, and I can put together kind of a, what a draft umbrella committee would look like for Monday? Pull together a meeting next week?
Are we, are we meeting Monday? Are we on? So the other, I forget, everything's kind of blending together in my head, but maybe Lisa, could we just start kind of a shared spreadsheet? Just so we're not all sending you, you know, 10 different ideas?
Yep, we can do that.
Might, might, might just be, might be a little bit easier. Are there any other comments on this? Mariano, Susan?
I think that makes sense.
Yep, I would just say it sounds like a good idea. And that's, you know, two groups that I hadn't thought of initially, because I was kind of thinking in terms of businesses, but definitely churches and athletic, you know, youth sports groups are important to include in the whole plan. So I think it's a good idea.
We aren't meeting again until next Thursday, May 14th. And that was the meeting session.
Thanks Patty. Okay, great. We'll look forward to that. So Lisa, where are we next?
So I'm going to send you revised scope of services from Tool. It's for $4,780 to review sightlines and determine if proposed changes are safe. So that's, I'll have, you know, the ability to look at that now too much in detail, but I'll send that to you for your comments.
That's great. We keep working that price lower. So that's, that's helpful. So great. That just come in now?
It did, like, like at the second I said it.
Okay, all right, okay.
I haven't for it. See the other.
We have the town clerk's motion.
Oh, yeah. So is this the motion to, is this the motion to transfer funds for the, to pay for the remote town meeting?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
I'm just looking for the latest memo from her. Just give me one minute, I'm gonna bring it up.
It's Mark's memo?
Yeah, it's Mark's memo.
Yep, do you see it? No?
Yes.
Okay, so the, the town clerk has submitted a request to the finance committee to secure an interdepartmental transfer from the police patrol permanent salary line item to the town clerk's professional services line item to cover the cost of the remote town meeting. By the way, the legislature hasn't, or the House hasn't voted on this yet, as far as I know. I mean, maybe they did this morning. As you are aware, according to Master of Law, Chapter 44, Section 33B, during the timeframe of May 1st through July 15th, annually, the town may utilize this mechanism to adjust municipal budgets as needed. So due to the state of emergency, the town clerk is working with management to secure the necessary equipment and vendors to conduct the town meeting remotely on June 8th, 2020. Management recommends in order to preserve the reserve fund, the select board vote to approve the transfer funds from the police department permanent salary, account number, as you see here, to the town clerk's professional services amount and the amount of $15,000.
So should I just go ahead and make that motion?
I see that we have Stacy on the line. I assume that we have the money in the police patrol permanent salary because we haven't filled a position, is that right?
Yes, he provided a, he being the chief, he provided a bunch of details as to why there is money left in his salaries, and that's, that's one of them. So he's willing and able to give up some of his money to help other departments.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay. So I move that we approve the transfer of funds from the police patrol permanent salary account number 0121121-51101 to town clerk professional services account number 0116102-53118 in an amount of $15,000. Second.
I'll take a roll call vote. All in favor, Mariano?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
And yes, for me, the motion carries unanimously. And just to mention too, I, I'm only asking and for votes in the context of how it shows up on my screen. So there's, and they keep, everybody keeps moving around. So don't think that there's anything behind it. I'm just trying to work off a small screen. So was there anything else, Lisa, that we needed on, under kind of the state of emergency heading?
Nope, not at this time.
Okay. What, what did we have remaining on our agenda?
So I don't know if we should bring everyone else up to speed on yesterday's budget advisory meeting, because I know it was just you, Mike, and you, Susan.
That makes sense, yes.
Okay. I'll have you help me with my memory. So the, the budget advisory meeting yesterday focused on a, I guess, not quite a review of the, the budget that I sent over, but there was a couple of questions regarding the budget that you saw on Monday, which hasn't remarkably changed. There's some, a series of, you know, potential savings that various departments can have in addition to what's been proposed on, on Monday and Tuesday and Wednesday that we discussed. So like Mary Ellen's budget, I believe, has potentially, I think up to $35,000 in additional clerical, sort of non-union clerical support that could potentially be cut. The library has about $21,000 that they're willing to cut that was not reflected in the budget. There's a question about the, the planning budget, I think it was around 205,000. And Brian sent over something that I think, that I think the select, or the planning board recommended a level funded fiscal year 20 budget, you know, plus or minus whatever staff colas and raises are. So I want to say it's about an additional 50 or $60,000 savings there. There were some questions about the public safety budgets. So my budget shows the fire department level funded in terms of what their request is. And then the police department, there was a reduction in terms of half a dispatcher for the full year, and then a police officer for half a year. So that's about a $30,000 savings each, that $60,000 is reflected there. There was an additional 120,000 that I asked the GPW to look at cutting from their budget that is not reflected in that balanced budget either. So then there was a lot of questions from, about what the, the finance committee's process was going to be moving forward. So they basically have told me that, you know, Lisa, you're done with your, your many projections, you know, we'll take it from here. We'll be working on taking the information you provided to us and then going to individual department heads and then potentially revoting, revoting departments' budgets that they've already voted on. So there wasn't as much of an indication of whether it was going to be upwards or downwards, but at least the, the presentation has shown, does show that the, the revenue numbers are significantly more solid, the health insurance numbers are solid. So really, the major variables are the departments. And that there is, you know, there is sufficient room to fully fund the departments, as I've shown in my budget, if we did use up the remainder, you know, $1.3 million in the override that we originally going to schedule for fiscal year 22. The school department, I'm not really sure where FinCom is going to go. I think we all received news yesterday or this week that St. Mary's is closing. That's going to add an additional 35 students, or I would say Winchester eligible students into the school district. There was some sense that, that some of those students could be absorbed into, into, you know, some of the schools, but that, that the full impact of that still has yet to be evaluated. So I think there's a number of factors that the finance committee really needs to reevaluate with the schools. And I can't remember, I think they're having a discussion early next week about it. So I think it's clear that our recommendation in terms of town management, in terms of select board, is that we want to see the schools fully funded. Mike, Susan, did I miss anything important?
I think that's pretty accurate. The only other thing that we discussed is the recreation department being kind of an unknown in the budget and, you know, pretty high risk level financially. And so I know that was one thing that you're working with the new director on.
And I think Ellen Wittenmore said that she was meeting with Nick Kachulfo, I don't think I'm pronouncing his last name right at all, but the new director tomorrow. So
Right.
I'll follow back up with them.
Lisa, I, correct me if I'm misremembering, but there was also a set of potential reductions that I think you said you had presented to FinCom or to the FinCom leadership. In addition to things outlined in your memo and shown in your option three that we heard about, specifically some, like reductions in positions in terms of not hiring some staff at, in the police department, and also some potential reductions in fire. I think those were the ones that are grant funded, looking ahead. And there were a couple other things that, I remember Nicole saying that she would, that she would bring back to the various, she was going to check with the various town departments about those things. And then, and then the FinCom would vote accordingly. So.
Yeah, so there's, there's, it's like multiple scenarios for each department. So I think for public safety, the, there's been multiple iterations. So like the police department, in one iteration, I had the two new officers proposed in the override not funded. So instead of sort of giving them recommendations, I sort of gave them sort of numbers to consider that they would then go back and figure out with department heads what the interpretation would be. So the, the ones that I've recommended in my Monday budget, I'm basically calling this kind of a, it's kind of a no big pain bud, or no pain budget for the town departments. There's really no significant cuts that can't be absorbed. So like the police department has one retirement mid-year, so it's just delaying the hiring of that. And then we can decide whether we want to hire to fill that position later. And the halftime dispatcher, we haven't filled. The fire department has a number of openings right now. So the question is, you know, can we delay the hiring of four firefighters? And the, the answer to that was, we think that if we don't fund the firefighters within the budget, we will probably lose the safer grant.
Okay.
That being said, though, what's happened this year and last year is that they're fully funded in the budget, but, you know, we haven't been able to hire them, either because there isn't a civil service test, or because we aren't competitive enough yet to be able to sort of hire and retain in the fire department. So we would likely be able to keep the safer grant in fiscal year 22 if we funded it as I requested, which is keeping the full, I think, 6,54,000. But sort of knowing that, you know, it's probably very unlikely that we're going to be able to fill 100% of those positions, right? There, there might not be enough. I know there's a civil service test in September. I don't know if there's going to be enough in terms of a net attraction to the fire department. I don't know what the testing schedule is after that. So budgeting it is not necessarily the same as, as spending it. But the, the question is what the goals are, which we really didn't discuss. The, the point of, of sort of underbudgeting or lowering the budget would actually be to lower the override use. And lowering the override use is the only way to keep the tax rate lower. So that would be the big, the big impact. And just for the, just for the next year.
So that's still for them to, to decide and vote on?
Yes.
And I think FinCom had mentioned too, that they're going to be revoting some of their existing votes based on some of these changes in departments, is that you're understanding too, Lisa?
Yeah, I mean, so the revenue budget I have is, is, you know, 134 million. So, and I, and I showed a balanced budget. The FinCom goes in there and they decide to cut more, then the only way to balance the budget is actually just to lower the override request.
I thought they were going to change in favor to some of the depart, I mean, I guess I have no reason to think that, but that was my understanding.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know where they would put the additional money. I mean, I don't know if it's, and they didn't indicate that. I mean, I have the school department fully budgeted as they requested. So, you know, if they, just use an example, if they decide to, so if they cut the $21,000 from the library, if they cut the 60,000 from planning board, and they cut another, you know, 20 or 30,000 from Mary Ellen's budget, all of which I think those departments are prepared for cuts, that's, you know, I'm just going to round, it's like $100,000, you know, I don't know, I don't necessarily think they have plans and then give that $100,000 to another department. That wasn't discussed.
So this is just kind of part of an ongoing discussion, Lisa. So we'll kind of have some, some better numbers, maybe early next week.
So FinCom has stated that the latest they're going to vote on the budget will be next Thursday. So for next Thursday meeting, I don't think that I'll have, well, I might, I actually might have more information on individual, individual votes, but I might not have a, like a whole big picture. That being said, if they vote on the 14th, they have until the 27th to put together the budget for town meeting. It's, you know, it's fairly unusual, but not, you know, not out of the, the realm of what we've done before for the select board, for school committee, for somebody else to go back at town meeting and request something different than the budget presented by FinCom.
Yeah, we've done that in the past. Are there any questions for Lisa? Okay. Thanks Lisa. What, what else did we have on our agenda coming up? What what else did we have on our agenda coming up? In front of me.
I think we had the, go ahead.
Go ahead, I was gonna.
But it's on my phone, so it's taking me a minute.
Yes, trying to to find it as well.
I think we're up to the.
Oh, the the contracts.
Yeah.
The contracts. So this was a continuation from our agenda on Monday night to discuss the firefighters, police patrol and police superior officer contracts relative to kind of new information on our budget and revenue. Relative to the COVID-19 pandemic and looking out the next few years, so. So it's a it's a question for us whether to reconsider our prior vote to approve the MOUs and move into executive session to discuss strategy around negotiation or to or to not, so.
Right. And so as I said previously. Employee compensation is a huge component of our budget. We're not out of the woods and have a FinCom vote on next year. And with respect to these contracts, we started negotiating them with a share, a shared set of assumptions, including that the economy was very strong and that unemployment was down and the town had passed an override. One of the biggest goals of the override, of course, was to address the salary disparities between our staff and staff in other towns, both the teachers as well as public safety. And that's still a goal. But when we were approving and ratifying these MOUs, it was I think at the end of March and it was during this, you know, this now COVID state of emergency and and stay at home order. And now as we're talking about the budget, we're seeing the economic impact of this epidemic. Not anything we had in contemplation when we were negotiating the budgets. So I'm just very worried that now that we are looking at a possibly very deep recession that could last multiple years. That these agreements are just not what we can afford as a town to support over the time span of the three years of the agreements. So I just think we should reconsider these MOUs in light of the economic context that we're now in of a of a predicted recession. So I moved that we reconsidered our vote to ratify the memorandum of agreement with Police Patrol Officers Association, the Police Superior Officers Association and the Firefighters Association.
I would second that. If for a number of reasons, including discussion, because it seems like at a minimum, we have more information than we did when we voted on the MOUs with respect to the financial aspects of how things are shaping up with the town. Although, having said that, I'm sure, you know, everyone on this board, you know, obviously supports all of those incredible public employees of the town who would be affected by these MOUs. So there's absolutely no question about that. But to the extent that any material circumstances have changed, that this board should take into consideration. Certainly, it seems like we should always be mindful whether there's relevant information that has come to light that that may bear on on the town. So I second that and thank you for letting me make those comments.
Okay, there's a motion made and seconded. I will take a roll call vote.
Can we have a recommendation from town manager?
Of course.
So I just want to be on record saying that I very strongly disagree with this this move. The end of March was not that long ago. We understood that we were in a, you know, a down economic situation. At that time, I did then choose to provide long term budgets through fiscal year 24. And I will say that. You know, the the latest versions of the budgets have only improved, not just for the current fiscal year, but future fiscal years. So for that, that and many other reasons, you know, as a town manager, I have to say from an operation standpoint, from a personal standpoint, a professional standpoint, I just, I very, very strongly disagree with this. I think it sends a really bad signal. I completely understand the need to rethink everything. And Judy and I have talked about sort of rethinking everything together as you know, her and I thinking the school and the town side and maybe coming up with recommendations to look at every. You know, sort of across the board versus just singling out these contracts that just happened to now be voted at, you know, at the wrong time, so.
Thanks, Lisa. You know, I'm not sure how the board is going to go, but you know, it doesn't necessarily mean if the board does vote to reconsider that, you know, there can't be they the same conclusion on the MOUs can't be, you know, reached as well. It may be the the best decision. So I I don't know, but we'll.
I I I agree with the town manager. I mean, I think we had all the information before we had the vote. In fact, we covered it over several meetings. The MOUs, the spreadsheets, everything was out. And I think the MOUs were negotiated by both sides and in good faith. And I say, I think it sends the wrong message to go back on on our signature. So I I will vote no, but I understand.
Yeah, I'm sorry. You're effectively taking this off the Springtown meeting as well because I I just because that, you know, the person on board will only vote and consider this. After select board votes and frankly, they could have considered it, but they've been holding off pending this reconsideration talk, but I just want to make sure that we 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 understand that as well, that there was a timing issue as well.
I I don't know if that's necessarily accurate, but we'll, you know, that they they wouldn't be able to meet to, you know, approve any any changes, but anyway, well, you know, that's that's their schedule, leave it up to them. I mean, we do have a little bit of a window of time, but we'll. Amy, did you want to say something?
Um, yeah, I just, I I am, I've been thinking a lot about this and I I think that I'm with Mariano in terms of, I think that there's been a a ton of work put into this. I know that we've reviewed it. I know that there's there's differing opinions and that's okay. That's why we're we do what we do. But I think that, you know, I have to, Lisa's closest to this and you know, I think she's, if she feels comfortable with the budget as it rolls out over the next four years. And we can support our police and fire in this way. I'm going to vote no as well.
All right, we'll take a roll call vote.
Can I just make another comment also? I mean, technically, isn't this a vote just to have another discussion about them? We're not making a vote whether to on the MOUs. We're simply voting to have a kind of more contemporaneous, up to date conversation about these based on any additional facts we know. So it may end up that the ultimate vote is the same. It's simply, is that correct?
That's correct. Yep.
Yep.
So take a roll call. Yeah, sorry.
And I'm sorry, and we would have that discussion this morning, correct?
Yes, we would move to.
If the motion pass.
Yeah, yeah, it would be in executive session.
Thank you.
All right, well, I'm in that, I mean, I'm comfortable having a conversation about it.
So I'll take a roll call vote. Mariano, so sorry, all 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 in favor, Mariano?
No.
Susan?
Yes.
Amy?
So I'm going to say yes to have the conversation.
Jackie?
Yes, and I would also note that we obviously highly value the comments that were made by our town manager. But I'm voting yes.
This is not to have a conversation. This is to invalidate our previous vote. We can have a conversation.
That, yeah, we need to be
validating our previous vote.
I need, we need to be clear on what this means before we vote.
So it's a reconsideration of our approval of the MOUs and then to go into executive session to to discuss it to and so it's a it's a reconsideration, my understanding of our vote to approve the MOUs.
Correct. So a reconsideration means we are nullifying our previous vote.
And we will be reconsider, I mean, we're going to be having a conversation about these contracts immediately.
Okay, that's fine.
So.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
No, wait, I think that this, that was really not clear to me at least. I don't know if that was clear to everyone else.
Susan, do you want to restate the motions just so we can?
Yeah, okay.
I mean, can I ask one question? If we go into executive session, we have the conversation, we decide we want to keep things the way that they are, we have to re-sign the MOUs? Is that true?
You have to revoke the MOUs, yes.
Have to revoke what we've already voted on.
Yeah, I I don't, I I don't know if that, I don't know what that does for the the unions as well, so.
They'd have to re-sign as well? I'm just trying to think about that, like, what's this, this is it's not as simple as just going in and having a conversation, it seems.
It's it's putting us back in the same place we were before we approved the MOUs, so. That's what we're doing and hopefully providing more information that, you know, we have since taking that vote. It will help. There's, you know, it's not just that when we voted, it was that these MOUs were developed over a period of time pre-COVID. You know, when the economy was different, when things were happening in our our, you know, economic forecasting was completely different. So they, even though we voted close to the time of the COVID pandemic. These, these, the forecasting that led up to this was that directed those, the substance of the MOUs was many months prior. So I think it's worth it for us to consider. For example, when we had this vote on it, I I was not, I was only provided information that showed the financial increase of the not the percentage increase. And so I, you know, I was surprised that it was going to be a 21% increase on those contracts over two years. I mean, that's just on the municipal side, very, it's it's a lot in a very short period of time. So again, you know, especially, you know, our previous contract with DPW over the summer was 9% or so over three years. And I think the school's prior contract was the same, maybe 8.9 over three years. So we typically, you know, make a commitment to increase the compensation, but it's usually less over a period of time. So I I didn't have that information then, and that's that was the only reason for my no vote on it was that I felt like we just needed to discuss some more of the financial implications of the forecasting going forward. It may be that we end up at the same conclusion. I don't know.
Just just a procedural thing, we did consult, have, and Lisa helped us consult with town council. And I have an email back from town council saying that the discussion of reconsideration should happen in open session. And if there's an agreement to reconsider, the actual discussion of the contract can be in an executive session. So that was our plan here. To vote on reconsideration, reopening the question now and having a, having the reconsideration in executive session, have the discussion in executive session. So we're voting now to have a further discussion.
Okay, Amy, did that, I I know that you had kind of a question in the middle of your vote there. So, you know, I didn't know if you wanted to to change it or.
I mean, are we able, can we continue this conversation in open session and not have to nullify the contract? That's an option, right? And then if we decide, I mean, I just, I don't, I I, you know, in in principle, I don't like going back on what we've already decided. I just think that we we had, I mean, when did we take the vote? Two weeks ago, three weeks ago? I felt comfortable at that point with it. Nothing's changed drastically for me at this point.
I I don't do this happily or I, you know, I've been agonizing over this as well. I don't want to send a signal that's negative about our public safety staff. Definitely support them. And in this, our town's hour of need, you know, it pains me to even be going in this direction. I just watching and learning more about what economists and you know, like Moody's Analytics are saying about a recession. And I'm just very worried about the economic context that we're we're going through. Also, when you negotiate a labor agreement, you know, the first, the parties sit down and decide what they're going to discuss and they keep the issues to that list. They don't really change from that list, you sort of work from the top of that list to the bottom and then you have an MOU and so you're not really in a position to discuss changed economic circumstances or changed world circumstances. So really, at the time that that MOU was finalized was before we were really even able to be wrapping our minds around the economic fallout. We were still dealing with the the health fallout and the state of emergency. So that's what, that's why where I'm coming from, it doesn't have anything to do with, and I also don't want it to be interpreted as disregarding all the the work of the town manager and her her good faith efforts to really do what we plan to do, which is address the salary disparities. I still want to do that. It's just about the changed context, our changed economic context.
I mean, we just transferred $15,000 out of the police budget because we can't hire people. So, I mean, regardless of whether there is a recession or not, we still need to have police and firefighters in town. So anyway, my my vote doesn't change. I'm still a no.
Yeah, I'm a no as well.
Okay, Susan?
Did I already vote? I voted yes.
Okay, Jackie?
Yeah, I mean, I totally appreciate all of the good comments of everyone on the board, and this is very difficult. And I I I think it would be good to have a discussion. I'm, I don't know. Maybe when we have a discussion, whether it's executive session or public session, if there's something that you know, depending on what the outcome is, we may want to make sure that those involved in you know, the chief are notified and if it's in public. So I just kind of point that out, but you know, I I I'll vote yes, but I completely appreciate all the comments that have been stated.
Jackie, I'm just gonna wait. I wasn't able to hear if there, if that was a yes from you.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I thought I said that right at the end. Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, okay, so yes, and yes, for me as well. So the motion passes. Vote three to two.
I thought a motion to reconsider requires a two third vote. Which in our case would be four affirmative votes.
I think town council has I think town council has opined that that hasn't been adopted as a policy of the board. Is that correct? I don't have the decision in front of me, but
I don't remember that aspect. I'll be honest.
Actually, can I put you on? I'm on the phone with Mina. Should I put you on the spot and have you on on speaker so we can figure this out now?
He can call in as well if
Okay, great. Okay. Yeah. So me, I mean it's on the phone just to figure out because the four fifths or two thirds vote is was sort of my understanding of practice, but I wasn't able to find it any any documentation.
Okay. Yeah. And so Lisa, just good morning, everyone. It's Mina and the 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 question, as I understand it, is do you need a two thirds vote to reconsider?
Yes.
And and I do not believe so. I have not seen that rule identified anywhere. Keep in mind that you also don't have in you haven't formally adopted Robert's rules for the board. And so there's no particular set of rules for this vote. The time for a reconsideration requires a particular quantum at town meeting is set for the town meeting by law. But in your case, I don't think there's any reason for a super majority. And I also, the only other instance of a reconsideration in Winchester, if I'm not mistaken, and Mariano and and Mike, you were on the board at the time, was a three, two vote to reconsider in the process of the town manager search. I think that was a three, two vote ultimately as well. So the short answer is a majority to reconsider.
Okay, so the motion passes then. And and I was just starting to say too, that one of the things that I think the board needs to do is put some policies into place around budgeting and around our negotiations. I spoke with former selectman Whitehead about the prior practice of the board. And there had been kind of a very long involved involvement of of two members of the board in negotiations. And I know the school committee, they have a very prescribed policy around the their their process. And so I I think we can we can probably you know, we can probably look to do that in the in the future. And I know Susan's been speaking with the school committee and informing us a little bit about that, too. A lot, a lot of our policies over the years has just been the way that we've been doing things and haven't really been put on paper. So I think things have been, you know, fairly unclear. So
I think it just seems like there's been a kind of a loss of institutional memory. And unfortunately, some of these things that are really fundamental to how a committee or a board is supposed to function never got put into writing. And the school committee has, I would say, too many policies and too much going on. But I think it would really help us if we had a little more structure around how we develop the budget, a little more structure about how neighbor contracts are negotiated, maybe a little more structure about how new members are brought on board because I felt like even having experience on the school committee, I was puzzled and there were gaps in how I understood things. And maybe also more of a process for annual evaluations of people that we hire, just because that's got to be a kind of normal part of the year. So I think with those few things in place, we would be able to be more proactive instead of reactive and we everyone would understand their roles and and the the way, you know, the process works in various things and understand our annual calendar as well. So that's that's sort of a separate discussion from this for me.
Okay. So we do have an executive session that has been noticed to kind of move this discussion there about how to proceed. So we can do one or two things. We can talk about in open session here about what the next steps are if we do want to have one or two board members be involved in conversations about the contracts moving forward. You know, I I don't know. I mean, I I wouldn't be a part, you know, of I wouldn't be personally one of those members engaged in that conversation. I think it should be other members, but but I think that we probably should identify a couple of members of the board to do that.
So, I mean, I think we need to have input from town council on what negotiations we can reopen right now, given that we, well, I don't know if we have a signed MOU anymore. I don't know what the vote just did. So
Well, it's been reconsidered.
So, I mean, is do we this is think I'm going, I mean, are we even going to have something for Springtown meeting? Or is everything going to go back into the unallocated wage reserve and we're going to go into the fiscal year without a contract?
It could be that. That's actually how actually the last contract that was, we were two years behind. And you know, obviously, I think we we want to try to, you know, get something done as quickly as possible. As I said, it may be that this contract is the same one that we end up with. But I think identifying a a path forward for negotiating quickly, if that's how we can do it, I think I think makes sense.
So I mean, I think we're going to have a hard time to get the unions to come back to the negotiation table after what we just pulled. But so I want volunteer for for being that person.
I I would recommend that Jackie and Susan, I think, would be the ones to be a part of that if they want to. I mean, I know it might not be the most fun thing. And, you know, I I think I've been the one that's been more aggressive about these contracts. And so I I would rather it be someone else than me. And both Jackie and Susan have the most experience in negotiating these these kind of contracts.
Yeah, I would be happy to. I just I don't want to kind of get ahead of where we are with the board, but I would be happy to do that with respect to any negotiations. But at this point, are we about to do what we said we would, which was to sort of discuss these because it's been theoretically possible, we would have a vote after that discussion?
Yes, I think the we haven't nullified the the MOUs or changed our
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Yeah, you have. So the only way that you can you have some sort of cover to discuss as an executive session is if you have nullify the MOUs. So therefore, it's basically wide open. And that's why you can go back to the executive session. So unfortunately, right now, it's you know, not only does the board need to revote, but at this point, the unions all now have to revote. So there there is, I just, that's why I say I'm not seeing any way that this can go for a Springtown meeting. Unless you know, unless I call the unions and you know, we we meet as soon as possible, which I'm sure there will be open to. They certainly are going to want to hear what the heck we're trying to do. And I certainly will need to hear from you what exactly, you know, what exactly the goals are, you know, because I
So I I I think that it's not unrealistic that we can come up with some changes and solutions by Springtown meeting. We've done it in the past. Absolutely. And we've 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 actually taken contracts all the way up to the our meeting immediately before walking into town meeting. And it's not ideal. But I think we probably can make some very quick progress because of all the work that's already been done on them. So, like I said, I mean, I I think if Susan and Jackie and Lisa reach out to the unions and sit down and have a discussion, I I think that that makes sense.
Can I just ask a question? I thought we were going to now discuss them and any new information?
We can do anything. Yeah.
Okay, well, I thought that's what
There's no new information to discuss. It's just, I mean, we just so now it's back to the negotiating table with the unions.
Right.
But I thought the idea was to discuss some of the recent financial forecasting and whether or not we think that you know, impacts this and 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 then depending on the outcome of that discussion, then there may be some interest in these same MOUs. Or not, I don't know. But I thought that was the point was that we would have a discussion.
Well,
That was my understanding as well, that we would move into executive session, have a discussion.
So, I mean, I'll take a motion to move into executive session.
To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining for the Police Patrolmen's Association, Patrol Officers Association, Police Superior Officers Association, and the Firefighters Association.
All in favor, I'll take a roll call vote. Mariano?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yeah.
And yes, for me, the motion carries four to zero. I think Amy has jumped off, but is going to join us in executive session. This is Mike Bencore continuing the May 7 Winchester Select Board Meeting. We have just been in discussions on negotiations in executive session and are taking a motion pursuant to those conversations to to approve contracts. Susan, I'll take a motion.
So I move that we approve the memorandum of understanding with the Police Patrol Officers Association, the Police Superior Officers Association, and the Firefighters Association.
I think they have to be separate.
Okay. I move to approve the memorandum of agreement with the Police Patrol Officers Association.
Second.
I'll take a roll call vote. Mariano?
Yes.
Amy?
Yeah. Yeah.
Susan?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yeah.
Yeah. And yet, yes, for me, the motion carries five oh, take another motion.
I move that we approve the memorandum of agreement with the Police Superior Officers Association.
Second.
I'll take a roll call vote. Mariano?
Yes.
Sorry, I'm going to ask again. All all in favor, Mariano?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
And yes, for me, the motion carries unanimously five to zero.
I move that we approve the memorandum of agreement with the Firefighters Association.
Second.
All in favor, Mariano?
Yes.
Amy? Jackie?
Yeah.
Susan?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. I appreciate. I know that these are tough conversations. And we'll move forward, you know, from here. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So before we do, I just wanted to indicate that we very much appreciate having our chiefs participate in in a part of this meeting and we have great respect for and very much appreciate our town manager and everything she does for the town every single day.
You're here.
Thank you.
I'm sorry to start a trip. I I just to be on the safe side. Might have to actually take another vote to rescind your previous vote. I'm not actually sure if you have to do that, but
Let's take one anyway.
So to rescind, so to rescind reconsideration. And we only need one because we only took one vote to reconsider. We don't need all three separate.
Okay, I rescind is the verb.
Our reconsideration.
Second.
Okay. I move that we rescind our vote to reconsider the memorandum of agreement with memorandum of agreement with the Police Patrol of Patrol Officers Association, Police Superior Officers Association, and the Firefighters Association.
Second.
All in favor, I'll take a roll call vote. Mariano?
Yes.
Amy?
Yeah.
Susan?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
And yes, for me. So the motion carries unanimously five to zero. Take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Take a roll call vote. Mariano?
Yes.
Amy?
Yeah.
Susan?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yeah.
Great. Thank you, everyone. We'll see you soon.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.